You know.
All right, welcome everybody to the 4pm joint work session for the City Council and Redevelopment Agency of November 19th, 2024. And we have all council members present with the exception of council member Chaburka and council member Myers, who have asked to be excused tonight. Up first, we'll just do a quick review of our two meetings tonight, 6pm City Council meeting. We have some minutes to review, hopefully council member Graff and Hare, you've had a chance to review those. And then we have a public hearing, I think we'll take those both as the presentations on the proposed conveyance of significant parcels. From Ogden City to the Ogden Redevelopment Agency. Eighteenth and Wall and Lincoln, south of the Ogden River, and then we'll have a proposed conveyance of significant parcels Ogden City. From Ogden City Ogden redevelopment agency on 1820 Washington Boulevard. And like I said, there's a public hearing on that with no action. And at that point, we'll have public comments. And close out the meeting, any, any questions on or any discussion on the City Council meeting? Then following that, we'll have a special redevelopment agency with this, with reports from administration on proposed land exchange agreements to. With Lotus 1900 Lincoln LLC and a proposed land transfer and development agreement. And there's some additional information on that.
Chair Rich, we do have a change on the, the. Land exchange with Lotus and I don't know, we did send, Glenn did send out an email with that information. I don't know if anybody needs any other discussion about that.
I haven't had a chance to look at it because it came late.
Maybe.
It arrived at 2:15.
Right, maybe Jared, would you, if it's all right with Mara, if Jared could come up and maybe just talk about those last minute changes to the. Now, okay, thanks.
Yes, thank you.
Mike. There you go.
Yeah, thank you. And so. Last week in the work session, we talked about that I had asked and request the appraisals to be updated. At that time I did not have those. Been working with Western States multi-family appraisers and consultants out of Salt Lake who's been doing the appraisals. They didn't have those to me late yesterday afternoon. We had a verbal conversation because they got. The work done and they have some, they've sent those to me now. I just got those. Not too long ago, and so I didn't have a chance to update the slides, but what they showed. Was that from the previous appraisals that were done in 22. The city property had an increase in value because of the units that were, they're being proposed to be built on there. So increase that value. And so what that does actually has a balance owing. To the redevelopment agency on the exchange. And so what we've done is put a clause in that agreement in 3C in the exchange. That says that the developer would owe the redevelopment agency up to $420,000. And the reason we say up to. Is they still have a couple of steps they need to go through with planning commission. If there was a change in the planning commission. That changed the number of units that could be built, it could potentially lower that down. And so that's why we just put it at the up to 420, which would be the difference if their project got approved fully the way that they're anticipating. And so it is a change in, in our benefit. So in the slides that I will be presenting later tonight, it is the information that you saw last week. I do apologize. I did not get them in time to update the information on the slides, but I will go through and discuss that. That is what is taking place.
So Jared, I have a question for you. I guess I'm, I, I don't know why it's dependent on what. And how many units are built there? I mean, if our value of our land is $420,000 more. Why would we say up to? Why would we just not say it's $420,000?
So the appraisal really. It's interesting, but the appraisal really is dependent upon what the use is. And so the more density that they can get on there, the more units you can get, the more valuable your property can become. And so that's, that's the change in the, in the two. And so this would allow them to go up to 137 units of, of multifamily. Which increased the value of it. And so our property, I, I have them verbally. I just got the contract, but it put us at three something million and theirs is at 2.6. And so based on the way that they get appraised is based on the use of the property. And that's why if the, if the.
But isn't the use just what the use is and what it's owned?
Yes, but no, the number of units, the density they can get on it does change the value of the property.
It's just land. So I guess I'm not following how that appraisal.
And I can go through and, and share those appraisals with you, but.
So I, I would appreciate that, I guess, but can you tell me what the timeline is of adopting this?
So Lotus had requested and what they needed to do at this point was they needed to go, they needed to close on the property by the end of November. They have had, this, this project's been going on for a couple of years now. And they have exhausted the allowable number of extensions that they can request, not only from their investment group, but also from. For their light tech housing credits from Utah Housing Corp. They're kind of at the end of their line, which is. What started driving this whole thing as far as the urgency, which I understand and I do. I do apologize for, but that's what has been pushing this, that they needed to get it done in a certain amount of time in order to meet their, their requirements. Because they can't get any more extensions is what they've explained to me.
But they can apply again next year, right?
They can, they can apply. There's no guarantee that they would get them. However, they've also, they're also very worried because they've been awarded and if they don't act on them, they will. It will put them down on the list, but that is correct. They could apply again.
Yeah, I guess I would like, I think we should, I don't. I just don't understand. I mean, land is land, so.
Yeah, it's all.
And it's owned, whatever it's owned, I don't know, you know, it. I, I don't know that it, it would be too much different, I guess, but.
Yeah, it is driven by the use. So essentially on appraisal psych, if you did appraisal on your, your house, it's appraised for a single family home and that's the use. It's going, you're right, it's going to value out.
And whether I put a 4,000 square foot or 6,000 square foot. Home, it, the appraisal is based on how big my house is, not necessarily what the land value is.
Yes and no. So if you put a 4,000 or 6,000, you're right, they appraise the use of the land for a single family dwelling. But if the use of that property was. Say you could do three units on that same parcel, that will drive the, the price of the, the, the property is now more valuable. And so that's what's happening here. You're, where it's valued out that it could possibly potentially have up to 137 dwelling units on it. And so it's increasing the cost of the, or it's increasing the value of property for that specific use.
Is there, is there a reason to think that they wouldn't, it wouldn't pass through the planning commission as their planning, is there? I mean, is there anything that you're seeing that it would adjust that appraisal value?
No, not right now. I've been having that discussion with the planning staff. We've been going through and they've started the preliminary process of going through. All of these different items and in my discussions with our planning director and others, it. It falls in line with what the master plan represents and what the intent of that area is. And so we feel very comfortable that it'll get support.
Any other, any other questions on that? So with that, there is some language that Glenn sent over for amending. Amending the proposed resolution. So that was sent over around two o'clock this afternoon. So again, that might be something to just review before we get to that point on, if we are going to go ahead with that. You can see that email, so. Is that right, Glenn?
Yeah, that's correct. So I did send the language. It would be substituting the attachment to the, excuse me, to the resolution. I do have a few hard copies if, if folks want to see that in person.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Okay. That was on, that was. Two A, so two B is the proposed land transfer development with the Parkway Group. Any questions on that? That's. All the little tiny pieces of property that. That are, that we've talked about, so. Okay. We'll go ahead and invite Brandon Ripian and Jacob Farnsworth from Kimley Horn up to talk to us about the well, Wall Avenue corridor plan. They get that right? All right.
I got it. So this is Jacob Farnsworth. He's with Kimley Horn. So we've hired them to help us with the Wall Avenue corridor plan. They're helping us do all the traffic counts and helping us figure out traffic circulation. So he's going to just kind of give an introduction to the project and he'll answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you, Brandon. So like Brendan said, I'm with Kimley Horn based out of Salt Lake and I am also a local Weber County resident. And we are working on the engineering side of the Wall Avenue order of plan. So just a quick overview today, I'll go over kind of background of the project. What's the vision and the purpose of this project? Kind of what the scope of work that we are been tasked to. Accomplish and kind of the work plan of how we're going to get there. So you guys are familiar with what we're doing. So there's been a lot of attention that has been done in the past on Wall Avenue and it's based on. Other studies that have been completed. There's a vision that's been developed with, in conjunction with the residents and what they want to see on Wall Avenue. One of that is a better connection at Union Station to 25th Street. To serve as a multimodal corridor, so all let. Transportation uses from pedestrian to bicycle to transit. And then also to improve safety through reducing vehicle speeds. And really create a sense of pedestrian safety. And be consistent with the character along Union Station and the neighborhood and beyond. So creating a sense of community in that area. So that was the vision that was developed. Through the various plans that have been completed up to this point. And so, you know, this is. An example of what's been laid out for this area of what potentially the redevelopment could look like. And so, as you can see, it would be a major change to Wall Avenue, kind of making wall. A functional use instead of a kind of a barrier for a lot of folks. And so the purpose of this project. Was to look at Wall Avenue, not just the downtown area, but wall from. The entire length of the city, but to advance this vision through traffic analysis. And to see what really is feasible, what opportunities exist, what limitations there are. Because these great plans that have been developed, we need to put some numbers behind it to see what can and cannot work. Or how we might need to tweak those based on what's there. And another purpose of this, you know, as we focus on the downtown area from 22nd to 27th Street was where most of the analysis will occur. Is providing you dot with the technical foundation they need to be comfortable with future changes along Wall Avenue and what those changes are. So we have seven tasks that we've been asked to accomplish. Some of them are pretty. You know, typical project management, managing the project, how we're going to engage the city, the community and the various folks that are involved in this plan. Task three is kind of the existing conditions, reviewing previous work, collecting the data, analyzing that data. And then four and five, we get into kind of that scenario planning, visioning, developing cross sections and. Then task six, that report. And then the last task is to create a corridor agreement with you doc. An agreement on what they will allow to happen along Wall Avenue.
Jacob, do you ever in any of your tasks or have you ever with a client? Also help them with funding?
So.
Trying to find funding sources?
So we, we have, there are funding sources available and that's something we can talk about or. Show where those are available. One of the, the big things that this plan will do is the final document will have and. Cost estimating with an implementation plan as a part of that. So kind of the plan of. How to implement or the steps needed to get there.
Great.
Right. So first, I, I usually simplify this and call this just existing conditions, but this task. We'll look at all those previous plans and studies and make sure we have a good understanding of key takeaways. So that we're incorporating what's been done in the past and not redoing any work. We'll look at what we call origin destination data. And so that's using kind of the bigger data, whether that's from your cell phone. And it really helps us know where cars start and where cars stop. So we'll be able to look and see how many people are using the wall. To get somewhere on Wall Avenue or the downtown area and how many of your people are using it to completely bypass. That area and are just using it as a through foot roadway. And, and that's important because some of the plans have been, you know, what if we drop 24th Street and get it down on wall? How will that in change, change traffic patterns? How will the reconstruction of the interchange? Change traffic patterns? How will land use change traffic patterns? And so that's a big one, looking at land use. Traffic flow analysis, we've done several counts along the corridor and at several of the intersections and that will kind of be the foundation. We'll look at safety through crash analysis, transit, active transportation parking. So try and encompass all of that. And that will be one of our first deliverables is kind of this existing condition. Here's just a list of a few of those plans. There's more that we'll look at, but you know, the Union Station Neighborhood Area Plan. Ogden Station Plan, the Make Ogden. Plan and a few others that will, we'll dive deep into a few of these as part of our study. A big one is this scenario planning corridor visioning will develop cross sections of what wall could look like. And intersection concepts, how will these change? And then we'll use all that information we got to plug in our traffic data to say, will it work? Will it function? How should we tweak it? And we'll use this information to, to go back and show it to the community through a community meeting. And also posting everything that we do on the Ogden website will provide that information. And then we'll also take this back to you dot leadership. So they kind of get a touch base before finalized so that they can provide some input too. And then after we do that, we'll work on refining these cross sections. We'll meet with stakeholders along the corridor, get their input. As we refine these concepts, we'll bring them back here to City Council. To show them and also the planning commission meeting. And based on that input, we'll come up with a preferred alternative. And that's what we'll use to develop those cost estimates and those. Implementation plans in a draft final report, which we will also present to the city, to you as the city council and the planning commission. Of those that report for your input and before we finalize. And lastly. We'll do a corridor agreement with you doc that'll look at, you know, is it possible number of lanes? Can we reduce lanes to create a bit more pedestrian friendly? Can those lane widths be reduced to create more space? Ownership, maintenance, responsibility, you know. Where signals can and cannot be put on the corridor. And so that's, that's a very important document that Utah's. Sticks with, they go by those and they're, you know, when they come up with an agreement, they stand firm by those agreements. So that helps you as a city get that in writing. So that's the gist of the project. It's anticipated if things go according. things go according to plan that will wrapped up by August and have that ready for uh, finalization around that August timeframe. So are there any questions?
Chair, alright, yeah. Um, you mentioned on the slide just before, you're gonna do some uh, uh, maybe it was before that even, but public outreach, stakeholder meetings, uh, it's, I I think we've learned by sad experience that um, people don't get too involved in those initially until their cheese is about to get moved. And then they're all worried that they never got noticed. Um, how are you going to reach out and and create some urgency? So the people will engage with the understanding that things are going to change. Things are going to be different.
Yeah.
Uh, but while while we're still in the planning process and and before we get to the implementation phase.
So there's a couple of things and Brandon can could speak to this a little bit too. There's been some very good engagement already. So we're not trying to come up with anything new. So the public has had an opportunity to comment. We're just trying to see if it actually can function from a technical. If it works. But we're going to work with Brandon and and his team to, you know, when we go to those make Ogden meetings that they're reaching out to the underserved communities and getting it out. Our scope of work isn't a massive outreach. And so we're going to be relying on notifications and the things that uh, the city has set up already to be able to get out and the lessons that they've learned along the way so that we can maximize that. And so it's, that's kind of our approach.
Um, yeah, so the scope includes the whole corridor from the north boundary to the south boundary. So we are in uh, anticipating on reaching out to everyone that would be impacted by the the core or along that corridor. So we'll make sure that they're invited to all of the uh, engagement opportunities where we present the cross sections um, and we'll have like three different opportunities for the stakeholders to be involved. We'll make sure that we reach out to all of them.
Um, well, just, just let me throw this out.
Oh, yeah.
I know this isn't, this isn't like the paid parking thing. But we had a gazillion stakeholder opportunities.
Mm hmm.
And and uh, when it came to time to implement, everybody said, you never talk to me. And and so that's what I'm trying to avoid. I I don't consider that, but you know, all the years I was on the planning commission, we found out that people early on in the process uh, they don't take it serious somehow. I don't know why. Um, right. We've got, we got to do some things differently in order to get engagement much earlier than than that. And and I don't know if you've got a magic wand or what, but but you know, David was, he was all the way up and down. I don't know. Uh, he, he talked to everybody.
Yeah.
But nobody got talked to. So that's kind of my point is that.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to be creative.
I know he's right there, right? But but that's my point was, you know, he, he did try to reach out personally a lot and and it didn't sink in somehow, I don't know why.
Yeah, we'll try to um, do some public outreach a couple of different ways, not just sending a mailing notice. We'll do other things to get people interested and hopefully engaged.
Yeah, I'm I'm kind of thinking you almost need to threaten them a little bit. You know, these things might happen if you don't engage. I don't, I don't know, something like that to get people saying, oh, this is going to affect me and maybe I better in, maybe I better engage.
Yeah, unfortunately, sometimes that's the only thing that works.
Maybe change that on the record somehow, but it's like a sound.
I can't wait to, I I want to read those minutes.
But yes, note taken. So we'll, we'll work hard to do that.
And that's, that's not a unique challenge. That's happens everywhere. We do this and it's a part that's always a struggle.
So is this one of those times where maybe we don't need as much public engagement? And I can't believe I'm saying that. Don't put that in the minutes. No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
But sometimes we get engagement fatigue, right? And so we've got some big things like the general plan coming up. Is this one of those that rises to? We need a lot of public engagement or is it just one of those? I mean, you said it was more of an implementation plan of our, of some of the stuff that we're already doing with them.
Correct.
With the plans.
Yeah, so it really is an implement implementation of the Make Ogden plan as well as the um, Union Station Neighborhood Plan. Uh, so we, the plans show uh, Wall Avenue being different than it is today. It shows Wall Avenue having bike lanes, um, being more pedestrian friendly, having mid-block uh crossings. And so this uh, this plan really is to implement what we've adopted with the Make Ogden Plan in twenty twenty and the other plan as far as the Union Station Neighborhood. So we, we do uh, definitely want to receive public input on the different scenarios that we're proposing. And we want to make sure that they understand how they could be impacted. So, but it it won't be a start from scratch. We're basically, we kind of know the direction that we are headed. We just want to make sure that um, there are specific things that we address.
Yeah, I just, I'm.
Such as truck traffic.
Yeah, that sounds better to me than.
How people use it today and how it could impact them in the future.
Especially if you put it on a website and we can push it out some ways that way too, so.
I I'm not sure how to ask those questions, so I'm just going to ask it. I guess the way it's rattling around in my head, I mean, it sounds like, like you said, we kind of have a direction where we think we know where we're going with this. We're doing, we're doing the study. If if in the process of that study, we realize we can't make these changes, like we can't drop the traffic down to one lane. I mean, that that's a lot of traffic going through Wall Avenue or to do this, this is going to significantly impact other parts of the cities. Is that basically what this is is helping us to understand is like the full?
So we, we need to explore uh, or see if we could actually reduce lanes. That's something that we're looking into. If that's not an option, based on the data, we would look at other ways to do traffic calming. Uh, one of the goals is to make it easier for people that are on Twenty Fifth Street to get to the Union Station and vice versa. So um, if we're not able to reduce lanes, we could look at reducing lane widths. So it reduces the distance that people have to travel across or walk across Wall Avenue. Um, so there are other opportunities. Um, we could look at um, you know, trade kind of modifying traffic patterns, how people travel through the city. Um, there are a lot of different options that we're looking at.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, good question.
Chair, the the only question I've got is, you know, the the impediment here is this is state road, right? And you dot is a big player. What is you dots attitude toward transformation of one of their roadways like we're talking about? And we've seen the proposals from the Union Station Neighborhood Planning. Do, do we have any kind of feel at this point for their attitude toward our thinking and desires?
There are, Utah is working hard to make sure that they keep an open mind to the needs of the cities when it comes to their state routes. Um, I mean, worked with you dot a lot. You always have folks with different opinions. And that's one of the keys of this is we're trying to get in front of leadership early on in the process so they can identify uh, issues or red flags for them. Um, because it is, you know, a major corridor, nor-north-south corridor, that's a state route. And so changes to that will impact, you know, many different streets or could. And so they want to make sure that it's fully looked at. And so we have that strong technical foundation. So if they do agree that these changes can be made, they've got the backing to say, no, we've looked at it and we feel comfortable with these changes. And so we have them on the advisory committee and we're going to meet with leadership too throughout this process.
We also have um, Ryan Halpersen from you dot on our uh, advisory committee. And so he is hopefully communicating with uh, other staff such as Rob White at the um, division. Yeah, Division One U Dot. So that's our goal to make sure that they're well aware of what we're doing and uh, that we bring them along with us.
Do we have a, do we have a timeline on this, the scope of the, all of this as far as? Um, the, the timeline that we've put together would have this being completed in August.
August.
Just real quick on my other hand, as we, as you go through this, we make sure that you're contacting WFRC as we're doing the RTP.
Yes, um, so we, um, so Jory and Che, they're both uh, going to participate in this project.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, Jacob for being here. Yep, next we've got Barton Brearly, our planning director to address us on the three forty Washington Boulevard rezone, proposed rezone.
Hey, good afternoon, Chair Richie and city councillors, just a one P S on the previous one, you dots funding the study. So they're they're definitely a, an active interested participant in this. So switching back, so this is a request for rezoning of the property at three forty Washington Boulevard. This is actually uh, city-owned property that was formerly used as a fire station. Uh, you can see on the location map here, the properties split zone, the front of the property is C three and the back is R one six. So the front of the property has a, the fire station on it and the back is the parking lot. So the request is to rezone the fire station three property. So it's all in the C three zone. So this came about uh, since it's no longer being used as fire station, uh, been looking at uh, possibly selling the property and uh, looking at any potential use that someone might buy it for uh, would really need to be all in one zone for the potential use. And so that's why we've come forward with the request to rezone it. And the history of it, uh, the, when the city did their first zoning map in nineteen fifty-one, uh, they we did a, just a line a hundred and fifty feet off of uh, Washington Boulevard and that's where the zone boundary went and it didn't really care if it went through properties or not. Uh, then when the fire station property was purchased, uh, was acquired. You can see the lot extended out into the uh, residential portion, which because it was fire station was loud. Uh, but that ended up having the split zone property. So I'm looking at it, uh, planning commission looked at uh, consistency with general plan and the Hillcrest Bonneville Community Plan. So one of the criteria in the general plan is that zoning boundaries should not cut across individual lots or developments. So this change would actually make it conforming to the general plan. There is a cross-axis easement on the property that uh, we should be aware of, that when the properties were acquired the actually, it's I understand the city actually conveyed the property to the property owners along Ogden Avenue, which is in the back. And then as part of that city retained an easement so that you can get back to the back parking lot on uh, for the fire station property. And the picture you can see on the right is the uh, existing cross-access easement. So uh, that driveway is used as the driveway for the adjacent house. And the cross-axis easement documents actually say that that will go away if the property is no longer used for emergency services. So uh, we anticipate that if the city were to sell it, we would inform the buyer that that easement would go away. Uh, there is an existing fence or gate on the end and that could be modified to prevent that access if but uh, were sold. So some of the criteria is that zoning should reflect neighborhoods and how residents within those neighborhoods will interact. And the reason we'll avoid isolating neighborhoods. Um, zoning should reflect the prevailing character of the overall district neighborhood. And because of the way that access would be configured, uh, any, the back property, back parking lot would interact more with Washington Boulevard and not with Ogden Avenue. So it really would be more appropriate as a commercial zone than a residential zone. Otherwise, just have this sliver of residential in the the back, which would access through the front. Um, looking at potential, who might acquire it, uh, there is a possibility that if some of the adjoining property owners uh, might be interested in acquiring that at some point or some other party might acquire it and use the fire station as is or demolish it and do something new. But any of those uses would really focus more on the Washington Boulevard commercial property rather than the Ogden Avenue residential property, especially with that uh, cross-access easement going away.
Is there any particular access through the back of the fire station for that parking area?
Nope.
It's just a man door, is all it?
Yes. Yep, you gotta go through the building to get to the back. Some of the commercial criteria, the commercial zoning should be located on Lecter and Archill Streets, avoiding local streets that serve residential zones. So again, this would be access either through an adjoining property, if an adjoining property acquired it or just used as part of the fire station or if it was renovated, demolished. It would have access to Washington. And the Hillcrest Bonneville Community Plan just has a note, the support to commercial uh, for supporting commercial nodes in this property. And so it would be consistent with that. So the planning commissions recommending that you approve the rezone.
Do we have a potential buyer anybody looking at it or is this just all speculation that we're, we're going off of?
Uh, Chief Matthew, maybe you can.
Sure. Thanks, Council Chair and Council members. I I did approach the um, it turned out not to be the owner, but the occupant of the car lot. And he did show some interest in potentially having a uh, car maintenance facility and thought that that might be ideal. But when I talked to him most recently, he said financially, he's not in the best pit position to move forward on that. But um, but he's not also not the owner of that property. So um, depending on how this goes, I might even approach the owner of that property to see if there's interest because that really is the property that would be best suited to gain access to that rear parking lot. There's just a fence and a little retaining wall that would have to be removed or modified to be able to make access from that particular property to the rear of there because of the, the change with the easement.
Thanks.
Maybe you said this already, but did, do we require some sort of barrier to, to, so that people don't use it, that Ogden Street as a access point? I mean, there's a chain link fence at least in there, but.
Yeah, uh, zoning wise doesn't require it, but uh, as property owners, we could make that a stipulation as part of any sale or.
Burton, can you click back to the zoning map itself that shows the lots and then the adjoining residential neighborhood? Hmm, yeah, well, that one, that one's good.
Okay.
So all those Ogden Avenue residences are R one six.
Yes.
And it kind of looks like that chunk that is the parking lot is more contiguous if it's R one six than C three. Uh, how did the planning commission arrive at this decision to make, to really kind of push C three into another, a bounded area that's otherwise R one six?
Yeah, I think uh, it was just practicality looking at anyone acquiring the fire station, you know, Chief Matthew and I talked about, well, what if the neighbor bought it? And I have to say, well, they have to know that they can't use it for you know, for car sales or car um, maintenance because it's our. you know, for car sales or car, um, maintenance because it's R one six. And there's just really no real use of the back of that for R one six. And so, and plus the criteria, like that shouldn't cut property lines and that this really interacts more with the Washington Boulevard side life than the Ogden Avenue side life. Those are all things that the, that the Planning Commission arrived that, yeah, it's appropriate to rezone it.
So it kind of affects four residential property owners, um, two directly to the east and then one north and south. It, have we heard anything from those individuals, those residents?
Yes, uh, the, uh, property owner with the cross-access easement had talked to the Planning Commission. Um, their main concern was the use of that cross-access easement that's their driveway, and they want to make sure that, uh, well, they understood how that could be used in the future, and they were, you know, we indicated that that would go away if this were not emergency services, and they seemed fine with it. Um, and actually, um, this is the, uh, wildlife.
Rehab.
Rehab place, and it actually helps them could not have their facility next to a residential zone. But yeah, we haven't heard from the others. There would be setbacks and fencing required.
Yeah.
If that becomes commercial use.
Okay, thank you.
So it looks like there's a parcel where the, uh, the cut, or the lang-, you know, the, the shout-out language, the rezon, that maybe goes beyond the hundred and fifty. Um, was that rezoned? Was that, again, was that a property that was cross-zoned? You see where I'm, where it says rezon three forty Washington Boulevard?
Oh, okay.
Just below that, you can see there's a, there's a little bit of a, so at some point in time, was that rezoned?
Yes, and I, I don't know the history of it, but yes, it was. Oh, I don't have the whole map, but.
And then it also looks like south of that, on south of Fourth Street, there's also maybe another cutout that goes in, cuts into the R one six.
Yes, yeah.
So I don't know if, yeah.
Yeah, so at some point there were rezonings that went over that, just basic hundred and fifty foot. Okay, rezoning.
Go ahead, Chief.
Yeah. Council Chair, just, just as a matter of background information to kind of explain maybe why we're here, where we're here with this particular property. Um, when I became the Fire Chief in nineteen ninety-five, one of my initial assignments from Rocky Fleuhart was to secure parking to the rear of Station Three. We had a handshake agreement with George Osmond to drive across his rear property from Ogden Avenue to park in our parking lot. And that was the degree of the agreement. So I met with George and Olive, I never met with George without Olive, um, that's the way George was. And, uh, we negotiated a purchase price for the land to the rear of Station Three where those two homes now reside. After we acquired the property for Ogden City, um, Community Development at the time was looking at trying to build a couple, what they referred to as Crown Homes, I believe, in coordination with A T C. And originally they were going to build one, and we were going to leave one lot for our access to the rear parking lot. But then they looked at it and said, we think we can get two homes in there. And so the way we got with the easement and so forth is, uh, Bill Cartwright, who was in C E D at the time, negotiated a, a arrangement that they would make the improvements to our parking lot in exchange for, uh, this land going into the developer who was building these two Crown Homes. And with that, we received the, the easement. Um, I thought it was the other way around, I thought it was our property, and we were giving them an easement to drive on it. It was the other way around, it was the property owners, and we had the easement, and that's why the condition of the emergency services. And so they're well aware, I believe, they would, they would change the gate that currently is a sliding gate to a, just a permanent fence if this change were made, or if we vacate, we're using it as a storage facility right now with, um, some of our emergency backup equipment. So we still are living within the confines of the easement. And we would probably continue to do so, frankly, unless we sell the property. And it, it doesn't make as much sense for us as a city to maintain that property, the maintenance and everything in the history to take care of it, just to use it as a storage facility versus finding an alternative storage location and just selling the property and not having the maintenance cost to take care of it. And so that's what brought us to why we're where we're at, so I thought that background information might be helpful.
Thank you. Alrighty, so this comes to us on the third of December, uh, for action. So appreciate the presentation, thank you, Burton. Okay, welcome Tracy, Tracy Hanson, City Recorder, to come and talk to us about proposed campaign, uh, finance amendments. This was continued from October eighth of this year.
Good evening. Bring my big mug, because I get dry mouth when I'm nervous. So, because we're talking about elections, I just wanted to share like the most exciting stuff from elections. So just really quickly, before we get into the changes, in eighteen fifty-one, the top entry is the first election that's documented for Ogden City. It's pretty big, as you can see, it says the inhabitants of Ogden City held, um, a meeting at the Weavers' Schoolhouse, April seventh, eighteen fifty-one, and a, the first appointed officers of the city were re-elected. It doesn't name them, it doesn't say who they were, um, except for, um, Thomas Dunn. He, he had moved from the city and Joseph Grover was elected in his stead. So until we see minutes, a couple meetings later, do we have a full accounting of who it was? So in eighteen fifty-nine, I, I won't read this whole thing, but it's all about how, um, they voted by acclamation. So there wasn't, there weren't ballots, it was just a, you know, voice vote, all in favor, anybody opposed. So we thought that was interesting, um, and then the next one is, um, I don't know if we'll be able to read it. Um, this is the first documented Board of Canvas from eighteen seventy-nine. So we, we thought it was interesting where it has, uh, Lester Herrick was, uh, um, voted as mayor, but that says scattering at the bottom of that. So we don't know kind of for sure what scattering means, we think it means maybe other names were written in for the ballot. Um, we're not sure, but on each of the offices, it says, it says scattering, so. So that's the exciting stuff, now we'll get to the boring stuff. In, um, in two thousand nine, the council adopted a comprehensive financial ordinance, uh, elections for elections. Uh, since that time, um, we talked before in October, uh, in a work session, there's been lots of changes to state statute, which kind of brings in, um, makes it a conflict. Some of our, um, our dates and deadlines are in conflict, or that, um, it doubles the reporting or rules, makes them more complex than we'd like it to be. Uh, so we came to you and visited in October, and with, uh, feedback that you provided, we've, uh, revised our proposal. Um, so what we're proposing now is, um, anonymous, anonymous contributions currently in Ogden are prohibited, but the state allows, uh, anonymous contribution limits, um, fifty dollars a calendar year. So we're, um, recommending that we, uh, revert our, our finance, uh, rules, uh, to back, to closer to the state as we can get them, so that there's not a huge conflict or huge difference. So, um, uh, previously, we had, um, contribution limits of five thousand for the mayor, um, fifteen hundred for council members, we're proposing that that not change, that stay the same. Um, penalties for violation of any of the provisions, we just added some clarifying language, um, that allows us to give candidate notification and fix the issue. Sometimes, you know, you're in violation and now you can't fix it, you're just in violation. So, um, penalties, it just said that if it's not corrected within twenty-four hours, being notified of the violation may be punishable by an infraction under that section, so it just gives us some time. There's an advertisement disclosure in, in the state's code, but we don't, uh, it doesn't apply to municipal elections, so we're recommending that be kept, um, in our code, so that there's, uh, rules about billboards or, um, telephone calls, newspaper, radio, that, those type of ads. Um, and then, um, changing personal campaign committee to candidate. Um, no contributions, so the next one is, um, is Ogden City requires, um, a candidate to establish a personal campaign committee. And it remains in force until it's, uh, terminated in writing, so we're recommending that be repealed, that would no longer be required. One thing th- this changes is the candidate would be responsible then to sign their own reports and bring them in. With the committee, they've had, been able to have a committee that could help them with this. So this is, I think, an important change, um, that candidates would know they are solely responsible now for their campaign finance reports. And I don't know how well this will show up, but it's the schedule for, um, disclosure reporting. I think it's in your packet, and I have a printed copy, if you can't read, read the screen. Um, but there's been differences between the city, what our rules were for campaign finance reports and what the state had. As you can see, it gets a little confusing in there, um, with the different dates that reports were due. Our recommendation is that we, we follow state code and use those dates for reporting. Um, and so everything that's on this chart would, all the blue would be eliminated, all the green would be the dates, the new dates. So that's basically what, what our proposal covers, and if you have any questions, I can do my best to answer them.
Council Member, hire.
Tracy, do you, i- i- it, you accept those reports, um, electronically, right? You, you, so we can submit an email with the report, if, don't have to actually show up at your office, do we, with the campaign?
We can, yes.
Is that something that could be put into the code, or is it important, or is it not important, or?
Um, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think the code needs to state how it's reported, it just needs to be the recorder, to the Recorder's office by five P M. Uh, you know, on the date of the thing, so I, I, as long as it's emailed in and we acknowledge that it's been received, or whether you bring it in or mail it in, as long as we've received it by that deadline, it's, it meets the requirements.
I, I think there's some advantage, uh, that, you know, those things are all timestamped. Email comes in and you know what time it got there.
Um, but we also prefer the, the hard copy.
Yeah, well, okay, so, I just wondered if there was a, if there was something that you cared about much with that, or?
Just that they're in on time, so I don't have to panic.
You, you have, you have been so good at, at, uh, making sure people don't miss it just because they just forgot.
Is there a specific concern?
No, 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 not, not really, I just, I'm just trying to think through it, and, and that was one of the things that kind of came to my mind is that, I don't think I've ever electronically submitted it, but I think I like the idea, so.
Well, the last, the last election, you sent your reports electronically.
Oh, that would have been my campaign committee, which we don't have anymore.
That anymore.
Yeah, which we don't have anymore, for sure.
Yeah, um, I, we want it, we would like it to be as easy as possible for people to submit their reports. So all those ways, I think, should, I, I would hate to narrow it or say you have to do it a certain way.
Thank you, well, I, no, I wasn't recommending.
I wasn't recommending that we say they have to, I just wanted to mention that it could be done that way.
Yeah, I, we would definitely, that would be in the candidate guide, and, and the candidate orientation, that's really important everybody comes to. Um, that's where we talk about, like, a lot of these different issues or things that have.
That's a good, that's a good thing, thank you.
Council Member, Graff.
Yeah, could you back up a slide, Tracy?
I don't know, let's see.
Oh.
Yes, I can.
Can you go over the, no contributions or expenditures can be made without establishing a personal campaign committee? With the City Recorder Committee remains in existence until terminating in writing, and that would go away.
That will go away completely.
Okay, so, I've had an opportunity to visit with a number of residents, and some with strong feelings about this, because they've got some history with it that goes back to two thousand and seven, or nine, or whatever it was. Um, one was require reporting after you've been elected and in office each year if there's any activity in your account. And the thinking with that, for everybody's consumption was, if there are contributions being made to bolster somebody's campaign for reelection, it's transparent, and it gives the candidate or the, the office holder an opportunity to make clear if there are any questions about who's making contributions, um, the whys and wherefores. So it's not to look like something is out of sorts, or trying to curry favor when there isn't an election at hand. You know what I'm saying?
Currently with the, um, committee, the requirement, um, for instance, if, if, when you run, or if you run for reelection, you would start with the balance of your last report that you submitted from your last campaign, and you would have to bring it up to date.
Right, but that's not for, if, if I'm collecting any campaign money now, that would become visible to anybody until I launch my campaign, and if there was any shady stuff that I was doing that showed favor toward anybody that had made a contribution to me, next year, for example, nobody would be aware to ask a question.
This committee going away wouldn't change that, wouldn't make a difference in that. The reporting is still only during an election year. So, having, I mean, having this does not mean a yearly reporting.
It's just not required. This person really thought it was important that any contributions made over the course of a year be highlighted for public consumption so as to provide a window to what's happening, and, and ask the office holder, what's up? That's all. And then the other one was, it, it, the fifty dollar anonymous, no problem, but is there a limit to that? Two thousand dollars, and then you're done with anonymous donations?
Election, per election cycle, so that'd be the pri- between the primary and general each year.
Yeah. So you don't just have repetitive fifty dollar donations that add up to five thousand bucks? From an individual?
My, uh,
Or do they get around that?
I might be making an assumption, I, I assumed that meant fifty dollars per individual, so Fred Flintstone could only contribute to your campaign and honestly, fifty dollars once during that cycle. He couldn't do fifty dollars over and over and over, he could only do it the one time.
But if it's anonymous, who know, how do we know who it is?
I don't know who any of it is, to be honest. You can turn your report into me, I had one candidate who purposely put Shea Stadium, I think is what it was, as the address of one of the donations. I don't, I don't do sports ball, so I had no idea when, I mean, and they said, you didn't even catch this, and I said, how would I? I don't look people's addresses up, you know? That's one thing that's really difficult, I think, with finance disclosures, period. Is, it's, it's hard, it's based kind of on complaints, we're hoping candidates are open and upfront and honest. But it's based on complaints, you know, if somebody calls and said, I gave Council Member Graff two hundred dollars, and it's not showing on his report, that's the only way I would know.
And we do sign something about ethical behavior.
Yeah, there's.
It's voluntary, but.
It is voluntary, yeah, but every, so far, everybody's always signed it.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Tracy.
Yes, your ethics are different than mine. Tracy, one of the, oh, sorry, questions I have is, you know, um, as someone that's filled this out a few times, you know, and in the age of where we have a lot of ability to put things in an electronic format, would, would it be easier if, if we required a, I'm just gonna say like a spreadsheet, or something where it's typewritten, maybe a typewritten as opposed to a handwritten?
A spreadsheet would be wonderful, and then it's submitted electronically, especially with, uh, limitation, with the, um, limitations, uh, one of our candidates had eighteen pages of donations, the last thing, and it was really hard to sort through those and see, um, with the new apps where they can, people can contribute weekly, you know, or monthly, I was, I, we hadn't experienced that before, so we're trying to go through and find everybody's name and then add those all up. So it'd be wonderful to have that, I hate to require somebody do it, um, but we, we have heard some rumblings from the state that they may require even municipal, um, candidates to use their system. So we're trying to kind of wait to see if there's an electronic system that'll be required to be used. Um, but we definitely would like to look into being able to submit those forms electronically, and if not, at least asking for a spreadsheet so we can sort them and manage it better.
And, and just, I wanted to follow up with what Dave said, and so you don't do any checking whether, you know, you don't, you don't look and see the receipt? So if I buy a
Right, I'm not required.
Newspaper ad, and it was really, you know, five thousand dollars. Five thousand dollars, but I spent ten thousand dollars and you, I I don't know why I would do that, but you don't, you don't ask for receipts.
We don't, we don't compare your bank accounts. We don't. Yeah, unless somebody calls and says, I did see an ad in the paper one time. It was a full page ad for a candidate and they didn't report it on their. Report. So we called and asked them and they're like, oh, well, that was in kind. And so they amended their report, you know, and fixed it. But. But unless we notice it, unless somebody calls and complains, I mean, we look through the addresses and phone numbers, make sure everything's complete. Make sure it seems to be a legitimate purpose, but there's not even really anything we can say about that.
And what happens if somebody gets caught doing something like that?
So they're they're notified. My, uh, the requirement I have is to notify the city attorney. And from there, I I believe they would make a decision as to where where it goes. Um, but most often I, anytime we've had that issue, I've called a candidate and they've immediately, oh, I'll fix it. I'll amend it right away. I've never had anybody who seemed to be. Like would would fight, you know, and say, no, I'm not fixing that or no, I'm not doing that or I haven't had that happen. But but again, if if it did, I would take it to the city attorney for their for their further action.
I think people sometimes think that we have maybe more power than we really do.
And I do think it's discouraging sometimes because people say, you don't even check this. And I'm like, well, what would you like me to check, you know? So. The one thing with the personal campaign committee going away, that would eliminate also the. During the seven day period before the election, a candidate who receives a donation of seven hundred and fifty dollars or more is required to disclose that donation. Within twenty four hours. So that would eliminate that as well. That's part of that. Just just to make sure everybody understands that. I I think with voting by mail, I'm not sure. I don't know if that benefit, if people want that or if it benefits them. It would still be reported on their report. It just wouldn't be a separate one within twenty four hours. So.
Any other questions? I think there was discussion previously about, and then and I think it was just put out there as a, you know. Increasing those limits and then there was discussion. So can you kind of speak to that where where we settled on that?
Sure, um, I think originally, I'll I'll be very honest, we just threw some numbers in there to propose and. Maybe I don't understand the campaign side. Um, and so there was discussion about that. Everybody felt that was much too high. Administration doesn't have a proposal necessary, so we just took it back to the amounts that it that it was at. We didn't necessarily want to increase it or or like we need to do this. We. Just made suggestions on the updates.
And so when we're trying to basically align our disclosure reporting with the state requirements as much as possible. But the state requirement has no.
Yeah, they have no limit.
No limits, right?
No.
Okay.
And Ogden always has, that I've been here.
Yeah. All right. This also comes to us on December third. So if we have any other discussion or anything we want to see in that presentation. Oh, do you have another comment? You sure? Janine, do you have a comment?
I was just gonna ask if you have any changes, please let me know. Otherwise, it will come to you as currently proposed.
Any discussion on that seven fifty requirement going away? Is that that's something that we could add back in if we wanted to, correct? Or just or?
You make Tracy really sad. But I mean. I mean, I mean, yes, it could be added back in if you wanted it.
Okay, where there's not a an election day anymore, it seems a little bit tough to.
Right, where it's.
You know, yeah, where you've got three weeks you can vote.
Well, yeah, you have the three weeks and reports, you know, you could be looking at your candidates, making your decision, and then that report comes out, you finalize. If that's how people are making their decisions, they can finalize it and submit their ballot. I think there's.
I mean, there's already ways to kind of rig it if you're into that. I think the ethical pledge is is probably a really important thing. To your point, Dave, if if you wanted to, you know, I mean, somebody wanted to give you a lot of money, say that, just hang on to it until after the last reporting. And I'll just loan myself that money. I mean. That is an ethical thing to me. Um, and and that's why I think the ethical pledge is is the important issue. So that kind of thing doesn't really happen. We are really relying a lot on people's. You know, integrity. And, you know, which we hope we all have because we're representatives of a lot of people. So. Anyway, thanks Tracy for your work on this.
All right. Thank you. Up next, we have Justin Sorensen, our finance director, uh, to come and talk about proposed budget amendments, mid-year adjustments. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, pleasure to be here tonight, um, to go over this mid-year budget opening.
Before Tracy leaves, do you have anything fun from eighteen fifty one? Because.
I I wish I did.
All right.
These presentations, I I guess I need to figure out how to spice up these these ones. They're they're just not that exciting when we talk numbers, I guess. So I appreciate your patience as we go through it. There's a, there's quite a few in this budget action tonight. So maybe I need to work on that for when I come. Before in council meeting. So. So tonight, uh, before you, uh, there's several items, um, for your consideration. And I believe that this will be on the December, uh, the first Tuesday in December's council meeting, uh, for your review. But in this budget opening, there are several items. The first one is we received some funding from National Geographic to do what's called the. Community podcast with the twenty eight ninety two miles to go. And with that, they're going to give us funding for some expenses to be able to do this podcast, but part of it is we. Need to hire a part-time person and they're going to pay for a part of it. But we need to fund the other half of it. And so we are proposing to use out of fund balance eleven thousand, three hundred dollars to fund half of that part-time position. The other half, um, we'll look at in a moment when we get to the miscellaneous grants. Uh, fund to recognize the money from National Geographic. The second item. Is, and it's kind of confusing how it's situated on the on the page, but. We are in need of up doing some upgrades to our courtrooms at the justice court, um, for some of the electronics with the TVs and cameras. And so we'd like to propose, we have a contingency fund in the general fund that we use for various purposes each year. And we're proposing to use forty thousand dollars out of that amount. We fund a hundred thousand each year. Um, and we carry forward with any excess and currently from fiscal year twenty four, we have a hundred and fifteen thousand that's from prior years. And so. We'd like to propose using forty thousand of that and moving it to a justice court account for them to be able to use for equipment upgrades at in the courtrooms. The third item. Is another use of fund balance in our budget in fiscal year twenty four that was adopted. It included part-time funding or funding for a temporary full-time position. For that, uh, parking and mobility position that was never filled during the year. Um, as you know, we we added a full-time permanent position this year. We would like to, since that money never was used last year, we would like to propose using. Taking those funds and transferring them to our parking and mobility fund to add to what we have available there. As those, as as that continues to ramp up. And so that hundred and thirty nine thousand is what we had. Budgeted last year for that temporary full-time position. And so we'd like to use fund balance and then transfer that out of the general fund. The next item.
So Justin, just so I'm clear, that one thirty nine was parking the mobility and it's going to be moved forward and held in parking mobility.
Yes, it was, yes, it was meant to use for a temporary full-time position, but now we want to move it so it'll be available in in the parking mobility fund. Correct. Um, the next one is. Our arts, cultures and events group, um, they were able to get some funding. For, and I apologize, there's a lot of items and I just want to make sure I get it right. So they're wanting to do the inventory of the Denver Rio Grand Western two twenty three locomotive. And with this, there's a cost with that. At the time that this budget opening was being prepared, they were working with trying to get a donation to help with cover some of this cost. It's around thirty thousand dollars to do. What they're what they're doing. And so we proposed fifteen thousand of that to come from our general fund contingency. And then we were waiting to see if we got that, um, that funds from, I can't remember the group, uh, oh, the Narrow Gauge Preservation Foundation. Which, since this has been submitted, we did receive that. So in another budget opening, we'll have to appropriate those funds as well. To get us the total of the thirty thousand, but this at least puts fifteen thousand aside for them to use. And then we'll appropriate the additional fifteen in a future budget opening. The next one is another use of our our general fund contingency and it's to appropriate twenty five thousand and moving. Moving it to an account that we can transfer out of the general fund to the airport. We would like to use that for. The FAA requires, uh, an aircraft rescue and firefighting training. So ARF training. Is required and and this is, would help fund that training. It's something that. In the past, we've tried to find different ways to fund that, um, in talking with our new airport director and with fire. We'd like to propose doing it this way this year and and in future years, we'll make sure to look at that when we. Provide the proposed budget, but for fiscal year twenty five, we're proposing to use some exit, um, some contingency and and move it over to the airport fund. The next one. Cam's still on the same, I want to make sure I'm on the right slide. Uh, the next one, we. There were sixteen new positions added this year. And one of the things that we failed to do was to make sure if any of those positions required, um, any vehicles to make sure and appropriate a budget for those. So there are two vehicles under public services that were not, um, we didn't budget a vehicle for them for those two positions and they are in need of those vehicles. And so this is to use prior year fund balance, um, to appropriate that and transfer it to our fleet and facilities funds to be able to use to purchase. A couple of vehicles for these two new positions. Um, it's for the the recreation supervisor over aquatics and also the. I can't remember the title, construction project manager. I I I can't remember for sure, but so for those two positions. So.
Senior Construction and Development Court.
There we go. There we go. Thank you.
So, Justin, if I may, when we add vehicles, we take on maintenance expenses. There are a. Pool of money that is in that transfer that will go toward maintaining these additional vehicles?
So this would just be to purchase. Um, we'll have to look at, so when we purchase vehicles, we we charge back a a lease rate. Back to whoever the vehicle is, um, belongs to. So in the senses, this would be recreation and engineering. And so there'll be a lease rate that will be charged back. Um, by the time we purchase the vehicle and get them into service, it will only be, you know. Less than six months worth of 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 a lease rate. And so we'll look at existing budgets to see if we can make sure we can cover that this year. But then for for fiscal year twenty six, we'll make sure we account for that in our in our lease rate charges for those groups. So that's something part of our review each year. We look at what those costs will be.
Are there only two vehicles being purchased in this budget opening in total? Or are there other departments that are getting vehicles?
There is one other one that I'll talk about, um, and in a minute.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, so, and then the last one, um, to recognize, the last adjustment in the general fund. Is our sustainability coordinator position. It used to be under, um, management services and this year we moved that position. Under public services and engineering. And we had some excess budget in their line item last year that that we had set aside for our sustainability person to use. And we're proposing to carry that forward as a use of fund balance and then transferring that from management services to engineering. So that's why it's. Normally, we would just handle that through our carry forward, but we're removing it from one department to another. We're including it here for your for your review. So the total change to the general fund is an increase of two hundred and fifty nine thousand, one hundred. In the C I P fund, there are two items. The first one is. Um, and this relates to another action, um, further down, is we'd like to appropriate, um, some excess retained earnings in our in B D O from B D O lease revenue. And transfer that to the C I P fund and that'll be placed in our our general facility improvement C I P. And it'll be used for the golden hours roof. Um, it's something that's in in need at this time. And we hadn't funded that yet, um, with what's programmed for our general facility improvements. This was one of the things that. Has come up that needs, that has a little higher priority and and we didn't have. With all the other things that have been set aside. So we're proposing to use. Some excess because when we did the budget for fiscal year twenty six, we didn't approach or twenty five, I forget which year we're in fiscal year twenty five, we didn't appropriate the use of all. Of B D O lease revenue from last year. So we do have some excess. So we're proposing to use some of that in this budget opening. So that's, um, one of the items in the C I P fund. The other one is we were, we have an interlocal agreement with UDOT, uh, for. A light signal at twentieth street and. Twentieth Street and Harrison. And so we'd like to recognize that those funds coming in of a hundred and twenty nine thousand, two seventy five. So the total change to the C I P fund is an increase of two hundred and twenty nine thousand, two seventy five. Uh, in the airport fund. Uh, the first item is to recognize the transfer in from the general fund of twenty five thousand that was, we've talked about previously related.
Just real quick, so are we over budget on the twentieth street improvement then? Or does that go into contingency? I mean. Or am I just missing how that's working? So you dot gave us money?
For part of the.
Yeah, for the signal.
Yeah, so they give us funding for the signal as part of the.
And so it went into that.
That existing C I P.
So did we not, we didn't. We just expected that from you dot to come, is that what?
I believe so. Justin's here. I don't know if he could address that on how those funds.
I was curious. I'm more curious than anything.
Yeah, that that's a state road. And so in in doing those improvements, we went to UDOT and there were some improvements that they. Requested to be done. And so we were doing those as part of our project. However, they are paying for those improvements. So these should be funds. Coming from UDOT to us to do the improvements to the signalization.
So it's in, it's in addition to what we had originally done. Okay, that's what, that's, I was just curious.
Um, and then in the airport fund, so going back to the airport, so we talked about the twenty five thousand for R, so that's recognizing that transfer in and then allowing that budget to be there for, um, the fire department to use. And then the other one is, and this is again related to. Some items in or an item in B D O is we. Last year, we recognized some funding from the FAA. To be able to do improvements at the terminal, there's an additional, um, piece of portion of money that we're receiving of just over a million dollars. Which also requires a match and looking at, um, the terminal improvements that they're working on right now, the total cost of that project and building in a contingency. We're proposing to transfer in from B D O lease revenue four hundred and fifty six thousand. This is to cover both the match and also to set a contingency aside. For, um, the terminal improvements that are, um, going on right now, which is to build. On the the front side and and do some improvements to the parking area, um, at the terminal. And so between the transferring in from B D O of four hundred and fifty six thousand and then also, we would like to recognize the FAA portion of a million. Um, and then to get it so that we could balance what we needed in that budget, um, we had another line item that we'd like to reduce, um, in their machinery and equipment. Of forty three thousand. So the total increase to the terminal, um, building C I P is one million, five oh eight fifty. So the total increase to the airport fund is a million, four hundred eighty nine thousand, five hundred. Uh, the next one is the parking and mobility enterprise fund. This is to recognize that hundred and thirty nine thousand that we proposed to transfer out of the general fund. And we'd recognize it into the parking and mobility fund and we'd set it aside right now in a in a contingency account. At this time. And then the last one on this slide is our B D O. Uh, this is recognizing again, uh, use of retained earnings, so totaling five hundred and fifty six thousand. Which would go a hundred thousand to the C I P fund and four hundred and fifty six thousand to airport. Any questions on this slide at all?
How many buckets can we get for a hundred thousand dollars? I'm just kidding.
Did the, so we were anticipating that airport, uh, grant that million dollar, were we anticipating transfer from B D O? As well? Was that something that we had planned for or is that we're just realizing now?
So in in normally as part of the budget process, when we do have, when we do know what that award is, we'll budget that a match as well, which usually, which does come from B D O. Um, at the time when we were doing the budget, um, we knew about, uh, some snow removal equipment, which we did budget for, which that also is being helped fund funded through the FAA. But this was an additional piece. They were still working on some of the specifics with with the. The contract and and everything with the terminal and so, but we did, we did know this was coming and so. We needed to, but the amount, the four hundred and fifty six is a little bit higher than what the match normally would be. This is to allow us to have contingency in there as well on that project.
So a little more serious question about the the golden hours building. Do, and this is maybe more of a a broader question. Do we, do we do asset life? So you know, what's the life of the golden hours building? Um, what's the life of? Public services building, those kind of things. Do we do those kind of?
Yeah, so we, so we we capitalize those assets and put them, um, depending on the asset, but a lot of those will do over thirty years, those buildings. And so the golden hours building would be on our on our books for thirty years.
That that's the financial. That, that's the financial piece. What about the, the actual, the actual wear of the, I mean, like the ability for the building to stand for over thirty?
Justin's exactly right and golden hours is a lot older than thirty years. So is Lauren Farpole. So are a lot of the city assets. So we, we do track maintenance and costs in an asset management system. And then a few years ago, we had a contractor come out and help us look at all of our assets and help us plan out an improvement plan. Um, and that is how facilities has been building their requests every year. One of the things that we, we don't do is fund that full request every year. So we, we, we fall behind more and more. Um, it, it, you know, it comes down to priorities at the very end and
Sure.
we can wait another year on a roof or, or something, but they're having enough issues that they can't. So did that answer your question?
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, I just wondered.
Thank you, Lisa. Um, on the net, oop. Skipped forward, apologies. Uh, the next one is, is to recognize some funds we received from the state into the storm utility fund. Um, with the flooding from last year, uh, we were awarded a hundred and forty thousand to help with um, repairs. It couldn't go towards any prior expenses that we'd already incurred. It was for anything new, um, new expenses that we incurred after we had been awarded the funds. Um, engineering has already um, identified and used um, those with some repairs along the river. And so this is just to recognize the money coming in and, and where we use those funds for app. Uh, so that increases a hundred and forty thousand, six twenty five in our storm utility fund. The next one is in um, medical, the medical fund. And this goes back to the question on vehicles. Um, there was also a reclass of a position in the, in um, the medical fund. We have a training fire, it was a training firefighter that we reclassified as a training captain. And that now requires a vehicle. Um, and in order to cost save, instead of trying to fund and purchase a brand new vehicle, what we are proposing, what we're doing, um, what uh, the fire department that has done in working with uh, fleet, the fleet group is we had a, a pickup truck that was previously um, used by recreation that was ready to be replaced. And instead of putting it up for auction on uh, gov deals where we sell a lot of our, our old vehicles and equipment, um, they decided to repurpose that vehicle and move it to the fire department. And so what this is, is, is the fire department paying the fair value of what that vehicle was and to outfit it to what they need it to be um, for their use now with the training fire captain. So we're, we're proposing to use night um, nineteen thousand, one hundred out of their retained earnings and transferring that to the, to the fleet and facilities fund. And then in fleet and facilities, so we're proposing to, to recognize the transfer in of a hundred thousand for the two uh, positions under public services and then the nineteen thousand that will be used for the fire vehicle. So the total increase to our fleet and facilities fund is a hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred. And then the last item is in our major grant in our our, should be say miscellaneous grants fund, I apologize. In our miscellaneous grants, this is to recognize that national geographic funding that we received of thirty thousand dollars, eleven thousand of that will go towards wages and then the other portion will go towards the additional expenses um, associated with, with the project. So the total appropriation for your consideration is two million, two, two million, nine hundred eighty two thousand, nine hundred and twenty five. Any additional questions for me on this?
Question?
Yesterday, I'm, you, you kind of sparked my interest in how do we decide what a vehicle is used up and we're gonna sell it on the used market?
So typically, I, I know fleet, that's one thing they do look at a lot is what the average life cycle is of a vehicle based on miles use. Um, they've, there's been studies that show, you know, once you get past a certain amount of time, once, you know, maintenance, the cost just to keep the vehicle running. And so there's that balance that we have to play of at what point does it become more expensive to keep than it would be to replace? And so that is something that they constantly review. Um, we, on the financial side, we uh, capitalize and depreciate vehicles over five years. And so for us, we look at that as a five year cycle, but a lot of vehicles, they'll try to push to five, seven years. Um, depending on the use, uh, cause depending on the department, depends on how many miles are getting put on annually, the use and the wear and tear. So there's a lot of factors that go into that and deciding how long to hang on to vehicles. Um, I feel like fleet has done a really good job and with the help of council over the last decade to get us into a lot better spot with our fleet where we aren't driving around vehicles that are falling apart. And so that is something that has, there, there's been a lot of, of work done on it that way. And so now it's keeping that momentum going of not letting fleet fall into that. And so, you know, they continue to evaluate what vehicles are the, you know, in the worst wear that need to be replaced and
So, so we do have some kind of a formula that we're following and
Yeah.
So, so this, this uh, vehicle that was uh, you know, refitted up for fire. I assume that's designed to be pretty temporary?
Yeah, so in, in speaking with, with the, with, with chief Matthew, what we decided to do was instead of trying to go and find or hey, use sixty, seventy thousand to purchase a new truck right now, we would do this and try to get a few more years of use out of it. Um, and then we'll come back at that time, once, once they do need to replace it. So so yeah, so we're hoping to get a few more years use out of it. I, it was one that didn't have, it was a, a little bit lower mileage on it. Um, but it was up for replacement on the schedule.
All right, thanks. Appreciate the info.
All right.
Thank you.
Um, I wonder, do we want to take the next site, uh, redevelopment item before we go to council business while we got you up here, Justin? We just go to the uh, proposed budget amendment for the forest building purchase.
And then we do have an administrative update.
And then, yeah, and then we can do the administrative update in any other council business.
Okay, yeah. All right.
This looks like a pretty straightforward, quick.
Yes, this, it, it should be. Um, I know a lot of discussion happened last week already um, regarding the forest service building. And so um, this budget action for the board to consider um, is to uh, appropriate. Wait for that to, oh, it's up there. No, you're okay. Okay, all right. So this budget action is to appropriate in the Adams area, two items. Um, one of them is, so with the purchase price of the forest service building, um, there is a required ten percent escrow that needs to be paid um, at the beginning. And so with the reimbursement resolution that was discussed last week, we would like to propose the ten percent the ten percent earnest money uh, and the, the money that would come from that reimbursement resolution would come back as loan proceeds to be able to be the funding source for this. So that's what the three hundred and sixty thousand is. So again, this, this is a non-refundable amount. If we, if the board does in fact um, decide to purchase the building and we, and we, and we pay this amount, it also will go towards the purchase price. It will be part of that three point six million. Um, the other item is in discussion last week that was, was shared is there are some ongoing carrying costs, which as of right now, the GSA is paying around twenty thousand dollars a month. And so to be safe, we're proposing um, to appropriate twelve months worth of twenty thousand dollars out of um, excess fund balance in the area, totaling two hundred and forty thousand that will be set aside. Um, if any of that is not used, it will go back into that fund balance in that area. So the total appropriation for your consideration is six hundred thousand. Any questions on the budget side?
So, and, and then both of these will come to us next week. We'll have a public hearing on both of them and yeah. I'm sorry, next week, meaning the third, next meeting.
Hey, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Administrative update? Just, or, yeah. So we got Justin. And Marty.
That's on. Okay. No, um, here, Monty, you can grab that one too. So, so we wanted to talk about parks. Um, some of our maintenance. Um, and so Monty Stewart, who is our parks and cemetery director is here to be able to answer any questions and to be able to briefly discuss priorities and, and how we move forward on um, performing park maintenance.
Count, uh, council chair Richie and, and members of the council, thank you for, for having us today. So with uh, some of the stuff that we've been looking at with being able to get um, some additional positions. Um, the four positions that have come, come to us have allowed us to look at our operation, especially on the maintenance side and really do some things that we've been wanting to for some time, but haven't really had the, the number of people in to be able to, to do some changes. And some of those changes are, we've been, you know, we have like a hundred and I gotta look my notes here, like a hundred.
Twenty eight or a hundred and thirty?
Let's see here. Yeah, a hundred and, about a hundred and fifteen different locations that we service throughout the city. And the way that it's always been structured is, is that our maintenance crews are trying to get to a hundred and fifteen different places. Um, we've had it divided into, we have an irrigation um, crew that has like, there's like seventy nine different irrigation systems throughout the city in the park system. And so we, we kind of wanted to look more at how the private sector does some things where a crew that goes out isn't just going out, this crew mowing, this crew doing irrigation, this crew doing this other task and try to build um, break the city into four different regions. Uh, two of those regions are going to be a little bit smaller as they will focus on the sports, um, sports fields and recreation facilities. So like if we have a park, uh, like say Monroe Park, it has ball fields there. And so we're going to look at that a little bit different and, and a couple of the regions will, will have less employees and focus more on um, aspects of youth recreation and recreation facilities. Um, the other, the other two regions will be a little bit larger. And so those, those crews will be handling everything from from, you know, whether there's a reservation at that park, restroom, restroom cleaning, irrigation, um, mowing and, and things. And so this is, we're looking at ways that we can increase accountability and not let things slip through the cracks. Like it's been really easy, I think, for um, you know, when I go out and I see something, um, and when I approach a crew, it's almost overwhelming. It's like, oh, we're, we're trying to get there. I, in, in fact, like uh, uh, camp, councilman higher sent me a text uh, just a couple of weeks ago on a small little area that's just fallen through the cracks. And um, so we're, we're, I, I feel like this is going to give less for each crew to worry about. They're not worrying about a hundred and fifteen different places that they could be called to. Um, and getting that down more to like twenty five, twenty five or thirty. But they're going to look at the properties in more of a holistic way of everything that's at that property is going to be. Um, most of it is going to be, be maintained by them. Of course, we still have our forestry group and our structural maintenance group that that will have to bounce, bounce around. But um, I, I'm excited. Um, and I know many of our employees are also because this, um, having those four positions is going to allow us to do, to do this. So um, I don't know if, if there are any questions on that.
Any, any questions with um, parks or how, how, you know, anything that we're dealing with, with any issues in the parks or anything like that?
Maybe, maybe an update on the rolling hills park. We've got word about some, maybe some unsafe playground equipment and
Yes.
Some issues with that.
Yeah, so the rolling hills playground, um, when we had, we had those calls come in, we went and looked and and they had previously had to remove a piece, a, a set of monkey bars and we couldn't find a replacement. The, the age of the, uh, of the equipment, uh, made it difficult to find a suitable replacement pieces. And then the, this last um, damage that had been done, uh, there were several pieces broken, um, some vandalism that occurred. And we, we could not find, um, could not find replacement places, pieces. So with uh, talking with Justin, we were able to, to use some, some of our uh, CIP funds uh, in PK one twenty four, which is our general park improvement and uh, work with the uh, playground installer and manufacturer, Big T Recreation. And they were able to um, do a rush order for us. So we, we removed the playground there and we have uh, one on order. It should be here sometime in December. And so we're going to move forward with replacing that. Um, so and, and just so you're all aware, we, we, we look at playgrounds. We have, we've done, um, I think thirteen replacements since I've been, been here in two thousand, uh, so it was really, really from two thousand nineteen. And we have rolling hills, um, which is ordered also. Mount Erie is on order and West Ogden Park. So uh, just this winter, early spring will be replacing, replacing those three, but we still have a number out there that um, are quite old and it's extremely difficult to find, to find replacement pieces. So um, we, we do inspections on those. Um, twice a year, we do a, a uh, it's called an audit, but it's a very in-depth um, inspection and then we prioritize according to that.
And Monty, and maybe the council might want to know too, um, I know you're kind of in your Christmas village setup, you know, mode right now. But if you want to maybe back up from the time that you start Christmas village and kind of quickly take them through what, what your crews do during the winter time and in preparation for springtime.
Okay, so yeah, I, you've probably seen them out hanging Christmas lights and things, but they start really mid-October. We start, there, there is one, one crew that will start and do some stuff in September um, because of the harvest moon festival and they have to get some lights and things uh, ready for that. Um, but yeah, uh, it, it's, it's pretty much ha- all hands on deck with Christmas village through right up until the end, which is next, I guess, we're coming, it's coming fast on the thirtieth. On the thirtieth. And then from that, um, many of our, our crews, they, they go back to, to doing structural maintenance or forestry things and, and the area maintenance group really, they kind of handle the day to day through the month of um, December with Christmas village where we have uh, train rides going on at night and then um, some security, some of our, our employees. Um, they do shifts for security at night, but then during the day, they're basically, you know, every day you're, they're going through some of those lights and uh, fixing what didn't come on that night. And if it snowed or, or rain is the worst, um, you, you know, working on those. And then in January, we start breaking down and then, you know, that depending on the weather, um, it, it, it's quicker than setting up, but it's still a good month or more um, to get everything broken down. Um, my, our, our crews also do snow plowing. You might think of um, operations is that, I mean, they are the heavy lifters doing the streets and plowing the streets, but we do uh, you know, parks. The trail, um, the municipal building here, golden hours. Uh, we have a number of facilities that we handle with the smaller, the smaller trucks and equipment, including the cemetery. Um, and then um, we're also we've been trying to switch our, some of our, our bathrooms in the parks to a, a more sturdy um, set of partitions and doors. I, I think Justin has shared some of those, those photos we've been building in-house in our um, in our shop, um, heavy uh, partitions um, that can hopefully with, withstand some of the and nefarious activity that goes on in our park restrooms in the summer. So, but uh, yeah, we'll start doing uh, you know, trying to do some updates in the, in the restrooms during the winter, especially the um, we, we've been putting in epoxy flooring and trying to repair some of the, the We've been putting in epoxy flooring and trying to repair some of the, the flooring and fixtures and lights and. And partitions. Those are some, some things that we get going on. And then our sports field groups. It's weather dependent, but they'll start really. Baseball will start as soon as we let them.
Yeah. Well, really all sports as soon as.
Really, and so.
Allow them to get on the turf.
It's a little bit year, year to year, you know, a couple of years ago, we still had snow in April. On, on, on most of the parks, but last year they, we were able to get a, a quick start. So a lot of facility maintenance that we do.
And then do you want to just discuss kind of where ramp projects have been the last couple of years? And then also. Where some of the ramp proposals are. That are be coming up.
So ramp. We've got a number of ramps that we're actually closing out right now. Orchard Park, we're, we're just finishing up that and Grandview Park. We've, both, both of those received new playgrounds and. Orchard Park received a, a small walking path around the, the playground. Couple new. Pavilions that were, that were placed there as well as an automated irrigation system. Though, those are, are closing out. And then also Big D and Mount and Francis Park. That ramp, those were two new playgrounds. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to see. Big D, the new playground and wall that we just built there. Have one small piece, some, some sod and, and irrigation adjustments to finish that one up. But. It, it's, it's all but, but done. And Francis Park also is, is complete with a new playground. We have been, the one that's probably hung us up a bit is, is the East Side Dog Park. And we had crews hauling some soil from. Marshall White and, and the water suit, the sewer division has been. Pulled out a bunch of clean field that they started hauling there yesterday to try to get some more level ground and. And so we can get the, the fencing installed there. And then upcoming ramps. We have a ramp for Lester Park that we had. We had started for, for phase one of the playground that we, we received in, in this, this last. July, I guess, is when it, when it was up, we've, we're working with ramp and. Applying in January for phase two, we're going to try to combine those monies together and working. Right now with Shalay Larson with IO Design on the Lester Park plans. And going to move forward, forward with a really nice playground there. I think it'll, it'll be nice. So.
And then do you want to talk just about the, the work that you're working towards on the cemetery with the columbarium?
Yeah, so cemetery columbarium, we're in design right now. That was a CIP that the council approved this last, this last round for two hundred and fifty thousand. We're looking, we've looked at several locations in the cemetery, but the columbarium, if you, I, I talked a little bit about it. I think the last time that I was here, but if you don't know what that is, it's a, there, there's some stone pillars that have niches in them. For cremation burials and they're above ground. Right now, we're probably, Utah lag's a little bit behind the national average, but. We're probably approaching forty percent of burials moving forward, our cremation. And so. This is a way for us to extend the life of the cemetery. And it's something that we, we hear from. From residents and, and visitors that this is something that they're interested in having that option. And it really does. Help us extend the life of the cemetery. So we're looking through, working through some initial designs for that and going to get moving on that.
And I think there, at the cemetery, there's some fencing there kind of on the east side, next to the sidewalk on twentieth.
Yeah. It, it, next time you drive up Twentieth Street, if you, if you look to, to the cemetery, we've been clearing some of the. The, the trees along there and you'll see. It's a historic fence, it's wrought iron in between some concrete, some concrete pillars. So. Council approved some CIP funds to make some fencing additions and repair there. And so we're just getting things going on that. It. There, there's also, we, we, we have chain link in portions around the, what we call the backside, but the north side that, that. Gets cut. Quite often and, and becomes pathways for transient populations to, to, to move through the, the cemetery. But we're looking at some fencing options along, so that would be the west and north side of the cemetery to go along with this.
And then I want to say too, in the future, the irrigation in the cemetery, I know we've been trying to tackle that at the golf course. We still have some more to do at the Mount Ogden Golf Course with irrigation, but the cemetery is going to need some. Some upgrades with the irrigation system there as well.
Yeah, we, we've been, we've stretched it as far as we, we can. I, I feel like on the irrigation system with the. With the cemetery, it's all old galvanized pipe and, and with fifty-five ga, or fifty-five thousand. Burials in the cemetery, every time you, you do a burial, you're affecting very old infrastructure. So. We're, we're looking through a phased approach for that. And so that's something that really there, you, you'll be hearing about coming.
Future project. So. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Yep, I, I don't have any on parks, but as long as we're inquiring of. The administration, you know, there were a big article in the newspaper today, the state. Homeless group is looking for a twelve hundred bed site. And they disclosed a few locations they're looking at. They didn't disclose all the locations they're looking at. Do we know, are they looking somewhere in Ogden for a twelve hundred bed facility? And then do we have any update on where the sheriff's at with the possibility that this. Facility to the west becomes an ice facility? And then the brown ice cream building, that buzzed for a long time and I haven't heard anything for a while.
Happy to take a couple of those. On the search for a. More of a centralized homelessness facility. My understanding is that they're looking predominantly in Salt Lake County. Ogden does not have a thirty. Acre contiguous location where that might be cited. So they're not looking in Ogden City for that. My understanding is that that plan will still involve support to regional shelters. And so Lantern House will continue to be an important. Component of the response to the need for shelter in the state. But as far as that larger facility, and I didn't see that article yet, but I assumed that they were all in Salt Lake County to start with. Were there any other, I mean, I, I can look at it.
Yeah, they named three and then, but Mr. Niederhauser said, we, we can't disclose numerous others that we're looking at. Cause we're just not far enough down the road yet. But I was just curious if they're looking north. And if we knew anything about that.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't know for sure, you know, I don't know for sure, but I, 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 I don't believe there, there would not be a. A location that would meet those criteria within Ogden City limits. So, let's see, on the, the third, let's see, the question on the brown ice cream building. We have heard from the owner of that building that they have architectural plans that are ready for the city to review. So we've scheduled a meeting coming up and it's within the next two weeks with our staff to review those before they go forward. With the permitting process. So we did, we did hear from them. And finally, I don't have all the detail, but. We actually just, well, just transmitted today our proposal for use of ARPA funds. And up to five million of that would go to the potential purchase and demolition of the facility here. So that is the current communication with the sheriff and the commissioners would be for the city to potentially purchase that. So in, in the interim, I'm not aware of any further. Further plans that are being put forward by the sheriff's office for a disentention facility here. So. Okay, thank you. And thank you to Justin and Monty. Did he just slip out already? Or no, I'm sorry, you're right there. Justin and Monty, thank you very much. Sure. For some reason, I don't know what, what happened there. So you're right there. Thank you. Thank you very much. Just sometimes, but like that tunnel vision, I apologize. But. Yeah, no, we really appreciate all those updates and, and thank you for your innovation with, with the way you're going with that team approach and. And, and sort of the multi-purpose, you know, functional teams. I think I'm, I'm really pleased that you're giving that a try. And hoping for some more ownership, you know, in a sense of pride in a smaller amount, not just feeling completely overwhelmed. By having to tackle, you know, a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty different sites around the city. So it was great work on your part. Thank you. I didn't have anything further planned. There's anything else?
I think we've got some Union Station excitement things happening this weekend with, and Janina, I don't know if you want to go over that.
Yeah. So Friday, which is the twenty-second. At five o'clock is when they're going to be reviewing the items that are going into the time capsule. And Ken will be presenting for the council, just, they're, they're asking everybody to take like two minutes. And so we're just putting in this year's picture. That you had taken out on the steps, a belt buckle and a challenge coin. So those are the three things that the council's putting in. So then later that night, there'll be a, a concert by the Chamber Orchestra. There's also a drone show at eight thirty. And then on Saturday, they've got activities. Throughout the day, starting at noon and going to six.
Great. All right. Any other council business? And that will adjourn till six o'clock. Thank you.